Welcome to what will be a work session. I'll entertain a motion to go into work session, please.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hanlon.
I'm going to immediately turn it over.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon.
And happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I was remiss in not saying that.
So as you can tell from the agenda, the plan for this morning is to dive into the details of the FY 2020 budget. To this point, you've only seen summary budget figures. And so in this presentation, we'll discuss the specifics of the new position requests, all other new funding requests, the budget realignments, the cost reductions, as well as the details of Dr. Hanlon's vision for FY 2020. And this presentation will be posted on our WCBOE budget webpage after this morning for the public to see. I have with me this morning Mrs. Rossetano. She's our budget manager. She's going to assist me with any questions you might have or point out if I say something wrong.
Nice list, she's going to keep you straight.
Keep you straight, exactly. So as you can see, we have a board work session on February 19th for our healthcare presentation. And then we have two more budget work sessions on February 26th and March 5th. And then hopefully, we'll adopt our budget at our regular meeting on March 12th. We just found out yesterday that the county executive has scheduled his public budget hearing for March 20th at 6:00 PM in the Flanders Room at the Civic Center. And of course, the public is welcome to come. It's open to the public. So I'm going to go ahead and dive in. And this is nothing you haven't seen before. The revenue figures haven't changed, but for the public, I did want to review this very quickly. We're expecting $45 million, 351,000 from the county this year. That's based on maintenance of effort. That's a $1.187 million increase. Our local revenue overall, we're expecting a $1.2 million increase. For the state revenue, based on the current governor's proposed budget, we're expecting a little over $6 million. Other revenue, about $37,000 more than we got last year. And overall, about $7.2 million, so $7.19 million. Our local revenue, and I'm not sure, I've actually shown you this slide yet, but these are the things that compose our other local revenue. Primarily, it's earnings on investments. You can see that's the big one. We're expecting at least $50,000 more than we received in the previous year. And these are just some of the other categories that make up the local revenue. I'm not really going to go over them, which is more for you to view and ask any questions if you have them next time or today. We're expecting about a $63,000 increase in local other revenue. Okay, so these are all the new position requests for FY 2020 that were submitted by our directors, principals, supervisors, and budget managers. And these next four pages are sorted by our accounting code state category. Administration comes first in the state manual, so we listed it first. In other words, there's no priority to these requests. It's not like we think one is more important than 56. It's just, we listed them in order by category. And, you know, I'm not going to go over all of these. I'm going to go over a couple, so you get the idea of how this works. But I do encourage you to review them and ask any questions that you may have, either today or during the presentation, after the presentation, you know, after the healthcare presentation, or during the next two boardwork sessions.
Again, you have a hard copy of this in front of you. I know a lot of times, board members like to take notes. So when he's on a particular page, you want to circle something, this is handy for the board members.
And there's plenty of opportunities for questions, clarifications.
Jesse.
Yes.
On the Prince Street, is that an additional vice principal?
Which line are you on?
Line three.
It's actually, I think what they want to do is take a student advisor that they have currently and turn it into an assistant principal position. That's actually one of the ones I was going to go over here in just a second to kind of explain how these work. So it's kind of hard to see. Let me zoom in a little bit. Just taking line one, for example, this is a request made by our budget manager, Carl Vincent. This is the account number, risk manager, I'm sorry, I wanted to say budget. Risk manager, Carl Vincent. This is the accounting code that it would go to if it were to take effect. And then in the description, they typically put why they think it's a need and why they want the position. So unless he, you know, he wants an internal auditor to provide independent and objective evaluations that would report to the CFO, CFLO, and the Board of Education Audit Committee. The FTE of one means full-time equivalent position. So it would be a full-time position if it were, for example, a halftime position, which I'll show you in a minute. It would be .5. And the cost of the salary is $66,500. The fixed charges represent the charges for health insurance or fringe benefits, health insurance, life insurance, that sort of thing. And then on the end, total cost of $83,505 for this position. And then the last column is a running total.
Jesse, can I question?
Sure.
I guess my question right now, what do we do? What's going on now?
We don't have an internal auditor currently.
I understand that, but what do we do? Do we have an outside auditor?
We have an external auditor. We have the legislative auditors that come every three to six years.
So it's not like we're not being audited?
Correct.
I guess my question is, why is it a need for internal? At this price?
Not necessarily a need, just a request. It wouldn't hurt to have one, but...
Well, I understand.
So this is just a cum, okay. So it's a cumulative total of...
Of everything.
I don't want to call it a wish list, but it's a list, it's a wish list. So there's no, all of you have probably recommendations. Okay.
Yep.
That's where, I was, one more Mr. Fitzgerald was going.
We did not want the board not to see...
Absolutely.
The requests that were made by all department heads and managers.
Right. That's fair.
And I want to touch on the one Mr. Brown just mentioned. So Prince Street requested their current student advisor position to be converted to an assistant principal position. You can see the FTE is zero, because it doesn't, you know, it doesn't require an additional person. And that's why that's zero. But it does require additional costs, because assistant principal makes more than a student advisor. So the cost difference is $9,000 for the salary.
The student advisor position would not be paid like that.
That's correct. Yes.
And that would give them two assistant principals?
Yes. Yes, sir. And they're a big elementary school.
Yeah, I think they're next to Delmar.
Right.
Yeah.
And then one more, just so you can see, like an example of a halftime person. I think it's Dr. Bear. Dr. Bear requested a half of an art teacher. And basically, what he wants to do is he wants to take a halftime art teacher and convert it to a full-time art teacher to provide more art classes to the students. So that's an example of where you might see, you know, a half of a position.
So if it's a new position, the cost would be their salary, then plus fixed is benefits, right?
Yes, sir.
If it's a, in a change position like the student advisor, then the cost is the difference between what we have now and what the new will be.
You got it. Yep.
All right. Make sure I understand.
And like I said, I'm not going to go over all these as a lot, but if you have questions today, I'm happy to answer them. If you have questions next time, I'm happy to answer them, or any of the two boardwork sessions. I'm just going to show you the total. So there's four pages of new position requests. A total of 65 positions. And the cost is $4.051 million.
So what I might suggest is that, as you review this between now and the next work session, if there are specific items that you have a question about, if you would send those to me via email or call me, so that I can talk with appropriate staff and we'll be ready to provide answers for you.
And we put the name of the request on here to make it easier for all of us to find out who made the request.
And maybe somewhere in here a little bit later on, but the additional elementary teachers, are there rooms already available for those, or would it require portables?
You work with a portable idea as well, but do you believe you are...
And again, to assist the board, Donna and Jesse did a good job grouping them by consistent area that match up closely with the categorical requirements of the state. So for example, you'll see regular instructional program as a header. You'll see choices, alternate pathways as a header. You'll see media as a header. That way, it's grouping similar requests in a particular area to help the board understand a little bit better as to where that request is originating.
This is on number eight, where they're requesting administrative assistance. Wasn't there something at the last meeting about trying to transfer one? What was that?
So, and jump in here, anybody else who's familiar with this situation. We have a matrix that we use, I'm trying to think of a better word than that, where we determine based upon...
Staffing chart.
A staffing chart, okay. But it is how we determine the needs of a school based upon FTE, the number of staff in the school, what their needs are relative to the whole system. And according to this chart, if you have between one and 38 FTE, then you are staffed at two employees in your office. In this particular situation, the school has been told over the course of the last couple of years that they are overstaffed and that we have schools that are understaffed. And so this was the year that we were making that move. And so in response to that, I believe that the principal requested that position, knowing she was going to be losing a position. And then her staff came out in support of the need for that position. I was planning on sending you some additional information for your review, but I think I can maybe do it a little bit off the top of my head here. That if you look at that chart and you look at the schools that have, for instance, three, which that particular, Willards has now three, we go all the way to, I believe, the, I don't know if anybody has that chart with them here today, but we go all the way, I believe, to East Salisbury that has almost 60 staff people and they have three. So it's, we're looking at the big picture and as you'll, you know, I could probably apply that statement to most situations where schools make requests. They don't understand their requests. They know what they believe they need, but they're not seeing the big picture. And believe me, we would love to fund every one of their requests. But with a certain amount of funding, we have to determine what their needs are. I even looked at that request based upon the number of students. Our staffing chart considers staff, but I looked at, and it actually doesn't help their cause at all. They are the second lowest enrollment in our school system in terms of students. So that's why that, Y Middle, Y Comico Middle School is understaffed by two, Pemberton is understaffed by one, and I believe Beaver Run is even understaffed by one, but with...
You have the chart under email.
Thank you very much.
Can I have some clarification on a couple of things?
Did I finish answering that question? Sorry.
When you do a transfer like that, do you go by, say, after all, administrative assistance, do you then go by seniority, volunteer? I mean, how do you, how do you go about that?
You mean how you decide who to move?
I believe in this case, it had to do with the type of position that would be the third position added, which is a 10-month, sorry, I haven't opened it yet, I'm looking for where that is.
It's a 10-month admin assistant.
Andrea, are you seeing it? I'm trying to talk and do this at the same time.
It's a 10-month, yeah, it's the position, it's not the person. So it was the person who was sitting in the 10-month admin assistant.
And that's what we needed at the other school.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
And a comparable, just so you know how the staffing chart works, Northwestern, for example, similar staffing, similar student population has?
Two.
Two.
Are they asking for another one in here? I mean, what are the real needs?
Northwestern's not, no.
Nor is Westside Primary.
That's correct.
I don't have that, Vince, sorry. Maybe it's just...
I mean, essentially, Y Middle was down to.
Yes.
And then there are other schools that are overstaffed by one.
You said they were down to two, did they have...
Down by two.
Oh, down by two.
They should have four. No, they should have...
I'm going to do the chart, they should have a 10-month, a 10-year and a half.
Yeah, you're going to see a request in here for one additional for Y Middle and one additional for Pemberton that Dr. Hanlon was referring to. And the way we're going to make up that second shortfall at Y Middle is via this transfer that Mr., Dr. Briggs just mentioned.
Okay, can I ask my question? The new kid on the block needs some help here. On number 32, WSP, what does that mean? Westside Primary. Westside Primary, thank you. Now, let's go down to number 35. Additional student advisor to make Pittsfield and WSI whole. So WSI is?
Intermediate.
Intermediate. What does it mean to make them whole?
Right now, they share one person between the two schools, and those schools requesting that that person may remain full-time and be promoted.
Just want to make sure you all know, I'm alert. I'm asking a question, we do know that.
We know that. Good questions. There's only a small number of acronyms you'll have to learn through this process.
We have good luck.
Anyone have any other questions on the positions before we move on to the next So the next group are the all other new funding requests. So these are all funding requests that don't involve positions. And it looks identical to the pages previous, only there's no FTE, because there's no FTE involved. And the first one is what we've designated that we're going to need for salaries, wages, benefits, health insurance, the $6 million, $32,000 that you've seen, you know, several times before. And I'm going to move on to the next one, because that's a little better example of how the rest of them go. You can see Karen Parsons is the supervisor that made this new funding request. It's for test scoring. And based on historical costs, she sees a rise in test scoring costs in the amount of $700. So she's put in a new request for $700 for test scoring. These are, these are a little more simple than the position requests, because it's just additional costs or new costs that the supervisors, principals, directors need. And I believe there's 10 pages? No. I think there's six or seven. And at the end, we see the total, total new requests, total $8.4 million. Yeah, over and above the, this is not including the positions, this is...
This does not conclude the...
That's correct. So 8.4 million over and above the 4.1.
4.5 or whatever it was.
4.1.
So over $12 million.
Exactly.
So what you're telling us, we got sharpened our pencils.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to break out the eraser.
And one more component.
Better be a good sharpener.
The other mandatory cost of doing business, the cost just to open the doors next year if we did nothing else, nothing new, is an additional $2.594 million. These are, you know, are increases in our insurances. Let me zoom in a little bit. So as Mr. Ford just mentioned, our staffing guideline says that we're short two office associates, one at Pemberton and one at Y Middle. So we put that in as a mandatory cost of doing business, because they really need those positions in order to operate to full capacity. We've got our PVA, Desmond has some PVA bus contract raises that, or increases that he needs. We've got our fiduciary property increases, life and AD&amp;D. Utilities are rising, we're short a little bit this year in utilities, and utilities are projected to rise next year, so we're going to need additional money for that. Our pension cost is increasing. Our contribution for the state pension is also increasing. The contribution increase for pension per the actuary was the presentation you guys saw a couple of weeks ago, where he mentioned we're going to have to bump it up to 9.06, and that's about $180,000 cost. The OPEB contribution, we have a $94 million OPEB liability. We have to start doing something about it, or, you know, we're going to be in bad shape. So we've proposed a million dollar contribution to the OPEB.
So we'll catch up in 94 years?
94 years. Well, to this point, we've only been, we have been able to do a little bit through Medicare Part D and anything we have left through the years of fixed charges. It's about $600,000 a year, so maybe 46 years.
We don't have any options for the start.
Exactly.
Got it.
And so the total, so again, our total new revenue is 7.2 million. Our total new position requests, 4.05 million. Our total all other funding requests, 8.46 million. And the other mandatory cost of doing business, which we just went over, 2.59 million, for a total of $15.1 million. So as Mr. Fitzgerald said, we're going to have to sharpen our pencils in order to make this work and figure out, you know, what we want to fund.
Jesse, in the requests, the first, I think it was lack 88, are they in any type of priority, or just...
Same priority as the positions, just by category. So whatever the accounting manual lists them in is how we listed them, just to be fair.
And number 52, I want to go back.
Sure.
On the grounds crew worker, we're now using local contractors. What is the difference between the $4,000 that we would be paying a grounds crew here and what we're paying now? Is there any difference?
Yes, the basic, the basic spread on that is... There is a small difference, however, with the contractors, we only have the contractors for that specific project. The difference in cost will afford us the opportunity to use those people for 2,080 hours. So we will not only be getting done the work that the contractors are doing, but I have them for a large balance of time after that.
Thank you.
We've imposed a program, Bruce, what, two years ago, where we're trying to do a big improvement on the, what I would call curb appeal of the schools. You know, we've been quite successful, we've had good response, as well as with a lot of the new construction we have, what I, in simple forms, I call these biofilters they put in now that we have to, they're a lot of work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. On any of the full-time workers that you have on the wish list, when their total salary is added up along with health insurance and all, are we hiring any below the poverty line? Are any of these going to be hired below the poverty line?
Not, not with the benefits attached on, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And again, Mr. Palmer.
The poverty line moves depending on the person's family situation, and we won't always know that information. We won't know what spousal income is, we won't know family size in all instances, so it's very hard to gauge, but...
Yeah, but I'm just worried about...
Yeah, given the basic poverty line and counting, you know, our salary structure and benefit structure, we would not hire somebody currently under the lowest poverty line limit.
So the next 10 pages show budget realignments. And what these are is, when possible, instead of our budget managers requesting new money, either for, you know, additional costs that they need for an existing project, or for a new project or new position, we encourage them to first look within their own budget and see if they can make some reductions within their own budget to fund the new requests. And that's what these next 10 pages represent. And again, I'm not going to go over all these, but just to give you an example, the first one on here, Mr. Dave Harner wanted some additional money for evening high school teacher hourly, hourly money for school to work and online learning teachers. He wanted $10,502. He also wanted some additional costs associated with faculty meetings, registrations, and commencement of $350. And rather than put that forth as a new request, he was able to find the money within his own budget, and he reduced his other charges account by $250, and his assistant hourly account by $10,602 to make it an even wash. So there was no new money needed, and therefore, it didn't show up in the new request, because he was able to make it work within his own budget. And that's what these next 10 pages represent.
And the importance of this is that as part of the budget review meetings that we have with staff, we basically point the finger back at them as part of the process and say, how can you fund this request versus coming forward with a new request? So we ask some of those tough questions. Well, you may not have spent that much in that particular line last year. Don't come forward with a new request until you've ensured you've aligned your resources to match your needs for the incoming, for the coming year. So this forces the budget managers to make some tough decisions, you know, am I going to submit a request when I know that I have balances and accounts from, unspent from a previous year? And so we force them to make those tough decisions. And Donna does an excellent job in that review process with our budget managers to ensure that they're utilizing the funds and resources that they already have available first.
So when, so when this budget is passed and moved over to Mr. Culver and the council, they don't see this realignment stuff, right?
No, they, that, this will be part of the printed document.
Beautiful, because I think that's very important, that it's very apparent that we're watching our own house, not just asking or some lineup.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we always, as part of the budget message, Dr. Hanlon and the president signs, always tells them how much we are realigning as part of that process in total.
That's good, very good, thank you.
I have a, I guess, a request. We have those first four pages of positions that we need. People up here on the board are not really aware of what everybody is doing, who needs what and all. Is there any way we could have, Dr. Hanlon, have you, one of your budget managers, kind of put some type of priority on this, on these positions?
That's the next slide, actually.
That's going to be the next.
You've already been through this.
You've been through this? I have, this is the first time I'm seeing this particular one, because...
Well, you're an overachiever. God, you're ahead of it.
That was that piece of chocolate that Nikki gave us this morning. Chocolate and coffee.
So that was a great segue, thank you, Mr. Palmer.
No problem.
So as you saw a few slides ago, with 7.2 million in additional revenue and 15.1 million in new requests, we have some tough decisions to make. And fortunately, our superintendent has a plan, which I'm going to review with you. This is the plan that's been laid out at the state of the schools in previous boardwork So as you recall, Dr. Hanlon has her three priorities, the first of which is to increase the number of students ready to enter kindergarten. And so we've basically gone through the requests and determined which of those requests fit into this category. And these are the four that we've identified. The first three are actually positions we are required to pick up as a part of the grant, the Judy Center grant being reduced next year. Their Judy Center positions at the Early Childhood Center and Pemberton, and it's part of getting kids ready for kindergarten, you know, the whole process. And the last one is materials needed for the birth-to-five population to go district-wide. And the amount of these requests total $235,000. And that's what we've kind of designated as being a part of this priority. Her second priority, and this one's a little larger, we're trying to promote the social, emotional, behavioral support and our English language learner support, basically getting kids ready, safe, and ready for graduation, increased graduation rates. And this one, that's too small. So this totals 1.319 million, which again, you've seen in the state of the schools presentation, the number hasn't changed. It's 17 new positions. It varies from an additional math teacher at the Next Gen Program, tech ed teacher at the Next Gen Program, three new ESOL teachers, which we desperately, desperately need, increased over 200 ELL kids last year. And, you know, the population just continues to grow. We haven't been able to add teachers, because we haven't had funds. Guidance counselors for Parkside, JMB, and Bennett Middle, a campus patrol assistant position, a social worker to support the at-risk population for Y High, social worker at Pinehurst, social worker at Chipman, mental health coordinator, which is mandated by the state, which we've combined with a position currently, but it really needs to be its own separate position. And the nurses for the three students, you remember, that were critical needs students that we currently are paying contractual, a contractual company to do. We want to hire three nurses next year, so we can save some money on that.
Jesse, question. I'm looking at the wish list of all the people that you would like to hire. Now, my next question is, are there people available to fill these positions?
I would, I would think there would be.
Depends on, depends on the position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are you referring to?
Well, this, no, this, all of it. I mean, it adds up to a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and remember, that wish list is not necessarily.
I know.
Our wish list.
Oh, I know.
Do you mean people within the system already, or you mean people available in the community to hire?
Available, not only in the community, but.
But within.
Willing to relocate here to fill those positions.
We, we won't know that until we, you know, obviously, there are areas that are considered critical shortage areas that we will, and the sooner we know and the sooner we're able to post and so forth, the, the better chance we have of finding candidates, but doesn't mean we don't have the need.
Having dealt with this in another life, this is what came, came to my mind.
And so the total for priority two is one point three one nine million. Priority three is.
Oh, can I, I have a question.
Sure.
This is probably for Kim. You're a mental health coordinator. You, you have somebody doing that already, but they're doing other things as well.
Other duties assigned.
Priority three is recruit and retain a highly qualified workforce. And again, this includes not just salaries, but also health insurance, which right now is astronomical, we're hoping to get that number down. The total for that is six point zero three two million dollars. And again, the, the mandatory cost of doing business, which you saw earlier, again, this is just the cost to open the doors next year, the increases in our insurances, our utilities, our, we have to replenish our rate stabilization rate because we had a one point five million dollar health insurance loss last year. And we have to, per the, per the policy, we have to have so much in that rate stabilization reserve. And that total is two point five nine four million.
Jesse, how does, how did you consider the increase in health insurance?
Carl Vincent calculates that along with our consultant from Bolton Partners, Mark Lynn, and he's usually pretty accurate as far as what he predicts. So we won't, we won't know for sure until April, Bruce?
I, I think the board's aware of the fact we're in the midst of an RFP for the contract renewal, that's nine one nineteen. And we're getting close to what those numbers are gonna be. We met with the potential candidates in interview setting last week, and we asked that all those participants enter, or send to Bolton Partners their best and final offers based upon what we heard from them. And so that information is being accumulated at this point by Bolton Partners. And hopefully, we should have a result by next week as to what the final offers are be, will be. And then it'll be a matter of negotiating whoever the winners are, negotiating the final increase for the new year. As Jesse mentioned, Mr. Vincent and Mrs. Vincent will be providing a presentation to the board on health insurance at the next work session on Tuesday. So you'll get to hear pretty much in way of details as to the entire healthcare program. But I, I think we had mentioned to the board, and Vince helped me with these percentages, the original quote was nine point two percent?
It was originally nine point three.
Nine point three, and then.
Think we can get it to five point two.
Thank you.
That was reason for my question. I know earlier on, you had said there was gonna be quite a bit of an increase this coming year.
Next page shows all the departmental budget reductions that Donna was able to find. She worked with the budget managers, principals, supervisors, directors, and, you know, pointed out where, where they haven't been spending money, where she thought maybe we could save some money and, and they've agreed to it. So these represent all the budget reductions that our managers have given us that they don't need for something else. And that total is two point one nine one million. So just for example, I've done the calculation for next year for Delaware State tuition, where we have to pay Delaware for the kids that come to our schools. And I'm expecting reduction, so I gave back, where is it? Last, okay, last one, yeah, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars towards the budget that can be used for something else, specifically one of these three priorities. And this is the same slide from the State of the Schools, just a recap of everything we just went over. Dr. Hanlon's vision for FY twenty twenty, we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand set aside for universal pre-kindergarten, one point three one nine million set aside for social, emotional, behavioral support, and English language learner support, which also promotes graduation rate. And recruit and retain a high performing workforce, six point zero three three million. The mandatory cost of doing business, two point five nine, nine four million. The budget reductions that we were able to find, two point one nine one million. And the total, after all those additions and that one subtraction, is seven point nine nine million dollars that we would hope to, to receive to, to make her vision work next year.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. One is, do we have any comparison to other school systems like that cost per pupil for her vision? Is there anything that shows anywhere that we run more efficiently than any other system or?
Yeah, MSD puts out what's called Maryland Selective Financial Statistics. And the latest release that we have for them is FY twenty seventeen, and it compares every county school system.
Okay.
By not only total, but also categorical. So for example, it compares us to every county for the category of school management support. It compares us for every county for the category of maintenance, for transportation, for every one of the categories. So yes, that's available. And we have a link to that on the board's budget page.
Okay, beautiful.
And we also do put it in our budget book. We do a comparison of all the counties and a comparison of the nine eastern shore counties and where we rank with them.
Okay. The other question I have is, do we ever look at, we wouldn't know this for certain, but say we know someone is gonna retire next year and that position, maybe we don't need that particular position, so those salary dollars transfer to one of these new positions. Does that go into this budget process as you move along? I mean, like, so maybe we don't need as many ads, it could?
It could.
Could. It's hard to gauge, I know, because.
And if you go back to the departmental budget reductions page.
Right.
You'll see a line there, line ten. This is always, as, as you well have articulated, it's tough to know who's going and who's not going. But when we do know, we do our best to try to estimate what that salary savings will be because they're going out at a high salary, we're hiring in at a lower salary. So as you can see on line ten, there's a, Jesse and Donna have already estimated about a savings of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. That they've put back toward the budget.
He said, put back towards the budget. So then that's, this isn't part of that one point nine two million dollar reduction savings from last year?
Yes, it, it is part of that.
It is part of that.
Yes.
Oh, 'cause I thought you'd put it back into the budget.
Well, put it back, meaning it's goes toward applying to other requests instead of asking for, so it, it, so if you pull, if you look to that page, go to that page right there.
The supertest page, is what I call it.
Yeah.
Got it.
There's, see, we're actually reducing the total request by that two million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. That's, so that's what I meant by putting back.
And so, again, the, the total money requested after these additions and the one subtraction, seven point nine nine million. As you saw earlier, we're getting a little over six million additional revenue from the state, about one point two million from the county in MOE alone. That's seven point one nine million. The request totaled seven point nine nine million. The request's less the seven point one nine million that we're expecting is an eight, eight hundred thousand dollar funding gap. So that would, that would be funding we would need above MOE in order to make the, the plan work.
So essentially, the superintendent is hereby submitting to the board for consideration that the board submit a budget request to the county that is a total amount of eight hundred thousand dollars above MOE. Her plan is, with that additional request of eight hundred thousand above MOE, we can make all of her priorities one, two, three, and the cost of doing business work with those reductions of two point one million subtracted from it.
We have to come back and we have to sharpen the pencil up sharper.
More, yes.
To make it a balanced budget.
That's correct.
But a plus factor is the fact that in her presentation to the business community, she's already indicated to them, that's what we need in order to make the budget work. So that's, that's a plus factor, they are aware of that.
And you communicated with Mr. Culver before the presentation too, right? That was very good, very good. So he's aware, 'cause I know he wants to know.
Does this take into effect any negotiate, anything that might happen during negotiations?
The negotiations process is separate and apart, but very much linked to this.
That's what I was wondering, and nothing has been said about what additional money we might have to come up with.
Well, we're in a public work session, and so the negotiations process has to remain confidential. I can't share what has been requested.
I just, yes or no, yes?
Yeah.
That's all I needed to know, thank you. Make it simple.
Does anyone have?
More questions?
Oh, I've got a bunch of questions, but I, I'm just seeing this.
As you go through this and you do have questions, it will be helpful to, to us to be prepared for next time, to be able to answer your questions if you would send those to me. Yep, that'd be great. Wonderful.
No more questions today? So we're adjourned, right? I mean, is there any other business in the work session?
I have a question, just not referring to the budget, but does anybody know how the student that was taken to the hospital yesterday?
From the bus?
Bus accident?
We had an update last night from Kim, so I'll let Kim share with you, there were actually more students, I think, evaluated. Sorry, the cord was too tight over here.
We need a budget for another microphone for that group over there.
We have the microphone, we just need a different plug.
Okay.
We'll get that. But do we, do we wanna do this? No, no.
Okay.
Thank you. So, how about I send you something?
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else? I guess work session's adjourned. Have a happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.